Justice for all.
Two board members here, so. So we'll go ahead and do roll call Christine.
Here.
Steve. Jason. Do we have any additions or additions to the agenda? None from the staff? Anybody have any conflict with interest or anything? Today? Correspondence? None from the staff, okay. We'd like to do a little plaque dedication. Correspondent, so. You do have a comment?
I have a public comment. My name is Brandon Hobbs, 773 Whiteville Circle. My wife Anna. Come in and have a seat. Yes. My comment today is. The board and Chief Patterson. I would like to comment on the state of our department. Stuff that's gone on in the last year. Stuff that affected all of these guys, whether or not anybody will say it. I will be open to say it. Stuff that's affected myself. My wife. Two girls. So before I start, I want to tell you a little bit about something, well, there you can tell. Like I said, my name is Brandon Hobbs, I'm currently. A battalion chief. For Wellington Fire. I was born. This, this is how much this has affected me. I was born and raised in Wellington. From here. Grew up here. My mom's. She used to rodeo on the tracks, she went to the school of Wellington Junior High School. But none of that matters. Went to school in Gunnison at her high school. I volunteered for the Western State Mountain Rescue Team. Been two years up there, I earned my, as a volunteer, Mountain Rescue Association certification, one of only two college teams in the country to do so. I was part of that. But none of that matters. I spent five years working on a hotshot crew based out of Alaska. I fought wildfire in 10 states across the US. I've earned numerous certifications, including crew boss and engine boss. I've been fighting wildfire now for almost 23 years. I have more hours on the fire than any other member of this fire department. None of that matters. I bought my first house in Wellington at the age of 24. My wife and I decided we were going to live here and raise our children. She grew up here just like me. But none of that matters. I started volunteering for Wellington Fire in 2006, volunteered for two years. Not a lot of time, but I did. But none of that matters either. Was hired by Littleton Fire Rescue in 2007. I was awarded top recruit in my fire cabin. I received unit citations during my time there, awards, was promoted to engineer, then to captain. Emerged as South Metro. President for the highest paid and second hardest fire department in the state of Colorado. I've responded to thousands and thousands of emergency calls. More than anybody on this fire department except one. Don Doherty, another battalion chief. Gone to being demoted to engineer. None of that matters though. I was a celebrated, accomplished, respected firefighter for 13 years before I decided I'm here with Wellington Fire. Back home for a battalion chief spot, I didn't come here for a VC spot, I could promote it down south. That's what I wanted to do, that's what I would have done. I've been here at Wellington for almost two and a half years, but none of that matters. Since I've been working here, it's been a blessing for my family. Been able to see my wife. And two girls while I've been on the ship. They stop by the firehouse anytime, say hi, say hi to daddy. My youngest Harper always asks me, hey daddy, how are the boys? Those are her boys. She's also adamantly told me since I started working here. That she. Me, one day at Wellington Fire. Not at Littleton. Not at South Metro. Wellington Fire. But guess what? None of that matters anymore. My wives and my girls' hearts are broken. So why doesn't this matter? As I stand up here in front of everybody. Because 15 years worth of my career, my promotions, my advancement in my work is being taken from me. At no fault of my own. My accomplishments, rank and pay are gone, all of that means nothing. This is directly due to force spending habits of Garrett Green. And the lack of oversight and accountability of this fire department. Due to the grossness manner to this fire department, my position. This position is being cut. The decisions made by Garrett Green and the previous board. Are making me completely restart my career. I have over 20 years of service in the fire service. I have to start from the bottom again. The fire department doesn't work where you just go somewhere else. So restarting my career is one thing, I can do that. I can do the work and I will, because that's the kind of person I am. And I will get it back, I will do that for my family and for everybody else that I work with and for myself. But I'm also taking a $30,000 pay cut to do so. In times where inflation is skyrocketing. Gas prices are rising and all gossiping are increasing, this puts my family at risk directly. But the worst part is how. It is for my wife and my girls to deal with it. I know I can provide for them and we'll be okay. But what's happening to them is worth studying. There's been comments made that firefighters are not losing their jobs. Am I not a firefighter then? I stand in front of you today asking them. Have I not, over the last two and a half years, pulled bodies out of cars, provided medical care? Have I not? Were coastlines, put wildfires out and literally kept firefighters from falling through the floor in a fire while dragging hose through structure fire? Have I not done that? So am I not a firefighter? I've done that here in Wellington. I thought that made me a firefighter, I guess not. And it's not just me, was Tyler Nady not a firefighter? Oh no, he was a battalion chief. What about Jeff Bezos Manowitz? Wasn't he a firefighter? What about Brett Convey, who devoted his life to EMS and served for over 30 years? He was left go, was he not a firefighter? And the sad thing about that, none of those individuals have been recognized for their service to Wellington Fire. Not a single one of them. So with a little bit of background, I have some questions for the board and chief. As an employee, I have questions. That some people want to ask, I'm not saying people in these rooms, but firefighters want to ask if people have not done it. Because they feel like they don't have a platform to do it. The investigation into Gary Green was last year. We have the right to know what the outcome was and what that was for. That single thing has dictated the rest of the future for this fire department right now. Nobody here, even me being a chief level staff. Has got the answers on what happened with that. Next, when will the department chief start showing an effort to retain their employees? To actually encourage people to stay. No effort's been made to keep me here. It's obvious to me that my years of experience and skills are not needed. Or appreciated, I should say. I'm being allowed to just walk away and I don't even have another job yet. I'm being allowed to just walk away. Chief Patterson, you and the board have the power. And the ability to keep people here, including myself. But that's not happening. So I'm asking the board. Do you honestly know that due to the financial and political situation of this fire department? That around half of the current staff is currently seeking outside employment at other fire departments? I'm sure the community would be a bit worried if they heard that. With no real communication of the plans for the future operationally and where people sit in their positions. People are losing faith and choosing to leave this fire department. With that being said, does the board now understand the hiring problems that we're faced with? You can't just pick somebody off the street and put them in that truck, doesn't work that way. Problems we're currently facing are going to continue to get worse, for the last few hiring processes, we've had fewer and fewer applicants. Especially qualified, certified individuals. This is for full-time employees, part-time employees and reserves included, the number of applications have gone down. The fire community is very small, where it gets around in the fire service. People know what's going on here. And they're deciding not to apply. Because of what has happened over the last year, I know this for a fact. This is even more of a reason to actively try to encourage employer retention. So employer retention, then how does that affect people that may be sticking around at firefighter safety? Has that been a consideration in the number of employees that we have here? And if it has proven, there's multiple studies that the fewer firefighters on the fire ground, the more prone to accident catastrophic events that we will be. Safety. Should we sacrifice safety to bring a debt down faster? We've already been running into 17 with two people. I can tell you right now, in modern fire, that is not safe. It's happening more and more, it will continue to happen, especially as the summer comes on. We end up shutting down into 17 for any reason, that's going to get worse. Whoever's left will be more unsafe than they were before. We rely on PFA now even more than ever. We rely on the bright apparatus resources and command, every time we do that, we're resetting the clock, minutes matter. Their nearest response is 12 minutes. By that time, people are already inside, the building could be coming down. It's as simple as that. We can't even guarantee a PFA response anyway, it's a mutual aid agreement, they do not have to come, if their system is dumped, they do not have to come. Safety, operational effectiveness. Outside of being an employee, I'm a citizen. Told you I was born and raised here, I raised my family here. I have concerns about coverage for my family and friends, thank you for coming, John. And all your families, you all live here too. So Chief Patterson, my family and I want to know, the board. What you're doing to keep current service levels, but also what's the plan for service levels in the future? I'm asking you as a citizen now. We can stabilize finances, but what are we going to do for service level in the future when call volume will increase? Fact is, we've already dropped service level by removing the VC positions, that's a fact. I saw from the rest of the community, a few years back, I created, voted for an increase in mills, just at the second firehouse. We now pay one of the highest or possibly the highest mill rate for fire service in the state of Colorado. And we're on the verge of shutting down a firehouse. I want to know where my tax dollars are going to keep going. And that the level of service provided matches the mill rate that I voted for. For this fire department to provide for my family and friends. The community deserves to know what's happening with finances in this fire department, but do they know it? Broadly, no, they don't, certain people do. They need to know service levels are being sacrificed, when they're being sacrificed, because they are and they will continue to be. No engines or firehouse has been shut down yet, that's a fact, but service level is, has been affected. Be even more drastically affected in the future. Again, I'm asking the board, I need to know what level of service my family and myself and my friends will have. Into the future, not a year from now. But five years from now and 10 years from now. If I have to call 911, I need to know the type of organization that's coming. This board. And the current administration have a large task ahead. Myself, myself, my family and my friends, who some of our, some of them are on Zoom, will be watching. For the direction from you, Chief Patterson, in this board. Thank you for your time.
Yes. John Jerome, 3712 Land Cup Street, Wellington. I feel personally responsible for what's happening right now. Mayor, we're not having words on the board trustees until a few months ago. And I was asked to be on the selection committee when Brandon got hired. I encouraged him prior to even having knowledge that I would be part of that committee to come here and work, come back home, you know, come. For the growing community that he's lived in all his life, yeah. As a board member for the town of Wellington, we were under high scrutiny for our finances. This board better be prepared to open the books to this community and tell us what's really going on. Because from what I've seen and heard, there was some gross negligent borderline criminal activity going on in this house. And we better find out what happened, because people like this do not deserve to lose their jobs, because the board, you know, sitting at the time, didn't have the guts. To fire the city chief because they found out he was doing something wrong. I fired Ed Cannon, the town administrator, because I found out he was doing wrong. Took a lot of crap for it, don't care, do it again, open over again. So. This board better pull up their pants and act like a board and keep tabs on these finances and keep this crap from happening anymore, because. The minute this word gets out, you see what happens to the board trustees when word gets out about finances. Next time, you'll probably have to put this out in the, out in the garage here, move all the trucks out, you'll have so many people on your bus, so. It's very upsetting and I take it very personally that this has happened to him, so please get this statement here quickly and open the books so everybody knows what's going on.
Sarah Stanley, 2084 Campbell Drive. I didn't know I was going to be listening to this today, but I came with some of the similar questions. What happened, why did we lose a chief and then why did we lose all the admin staff? Hearing that our firefighters are being docked, demoted, is concerning. I've been coming and have been your only partner for two years. And I came because they voted in no lobby and I wanted to know where my tax dollars are going, so. I would like to hear, I'm sure as everyone else does, why, why are we losing staff? That's a big concern for me and that the fact that we're losing firefighters now and losing the staffing levels, we don't have the coverage. Yeah, I think there's going to be more people coming in and I'll be encouraging them to.
Any other public comment? Do we have any guests or presentations?
Anyone you want to have, you think? Thanks for letting us do, if anyone has anything to do with meeting or. Sign us on what was just done.
Yeah, I think generally. You said there's a lot of question reasons. Stuff that we're. Is there? Or, yeah, address that piece of it and then we'll, but we're probably have to follow projects if we want to, there's a lot of question pieces right about. Yeah.
Future agendas, we can talk more about it.
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah.
I guess we'll go ahead and get, answer some of your questions now, I didn't know we were going to do it now or later. You know, it was rough on the board too to go through all that. And you know, Gary was basically was behind closed doors because we had a lawyer all the way through that process. Gary resigned, that took a lot of pressure off us and everybody that he did that. You know, he basically resigned, so.
Before the investigation was actually.
Right. I completely understand. Right, there was accusation made against him. Beyond that, we'd have to consult our lawyer. Okay, thank you. And then, you know, we, it has been hard on the board to go through the process, we've made mostly administrative costs to try and get the budget underway. By the time things were really caught, and I'm going to say it should have caught it earlier, no doubt about it. We made some drastic cuts in the budget to try to get things under control. And I, you know, Mike basically just took the position Saturday, he was interim chief and I think he's got a lot of things that. Changes he's going to make, you know, it's mostly good, I hope, I think there will be some changes, so just trying to cut our budget down. So we have a new budget going forward and that budget is always open to the public. So every budget we've ever had has been open to the public, so. That's my comments.
Yeah, I mean, everything that we do, every same thing we've done is open to anybody that might have wanted to come to work. All our, all of that monthly financials, audits. When we do. When we do a new budget, we're always asking for input from the entire staff. We put it out there for public review. Every single thing that we do is totally 100% open, probably can access. There have been times, I know, really, Chris, you would ask for certain things and, and you got them, right? I mean, I don't think you're ever denying anything, right? So it's. Everything's been out there, there's been, there's been absolutely nothing that's been. Hopefully it's not this concerned that we're hiding anything, because it's, it's certainly been there. And everybody knows what the board meetings are, they're open. And. We just. When there were questions, you filled them in and we'd pay public and you would have had questions and we'd answer, that's that. If nobody came to ask a question, we couldn't answer.
So one of your questions was, why are we losing people, why? Let go.
Budget, we were, there is no doubt that. That there were too many people for this size department. If we look at the three admin positions that we had. If we, well, I'm just talking about the three, I mean, I know there are others, but the three just people were here. If we look at those salaries and the benefits that we were paying. It's over $350,000. You add the other two, you add this. Way, 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 way. Yeah, and it's, and that administrative, and I know. That it's, it's not an easy thing, we struggle a lot with it, I've been on both ends of having to let people go and being let go. So I certainly had a deep appreciation for the situation that people were in. It did it to the point where it was. And, you know, any time you make, I mean, this is, this is, this is obvious, but it doesn't, so. Unfortunately, you need to make the biggest amount of savings, you're where you're spending the most of your money. And about 80% of our budget goes to personnel expenses, being salary and benefits. The salary is out there and then the benefit package over above that, where you know, the health, the dental and the guaranteed retirement is about another 30% of the salary, so. That's why we had to look at those areas to cut the most amount in the budget to where the most amount is.
If I can make a comment. For the more part, I will say.
So you might sit down by yourself.
Oh, sue Reed. I believe. I was too trusting. And. I'll just say that I was too trusting of. The budgetary numbers that Chief Green put in front of us. And I reread that.
Only thing I can say is. We just got into this and I don't have a lot.
Only thing I can say is, we just got into this and I don't have a lot of information, so I just got here. So, all I can do is hopefully they'll give us a chance to try to make things right, but it ain't gonna happen. Of course, we know that for us, but we'll try to work things out, go that way. I hope everybody's worked real hard trying to make sure it goes to life, right? Those, we gotta come up with some ideas and work as we're. I just want, hopefully we can get some time to do something, because I know you're probably more time being here and under a year of not knowing what's going on, I just have to, unfortunately.
Can I also quickly make a comment? We have not had, asked for another increase in the taxpayers in almost twenty years. So we went virtually that long without asking and the reason we did is that we knew we were gonna have higher expenses in, in terms of personnel. Like I just talked about, because so much of our budget prior to to having paid personnel was operational costs. You know, it was skewed where we were paying all operational costs and no, virtually nobody till we had the first paid fire chief seven years ago. And then all of a sudden it went this way and that was the reason that we went to the taxpayers at that time. I believe it's twenty years, isn't it, we went? It was twenty nine years.
And Steve, isn't it true that, and this one going back from what I remember is we got a grant to bring on more firefighters that ran out. Hence why we had to bring in more.
Yeah, we had a federal FEMA grant.
Yeah, so I mean, I know some stuff, but it'll come up and. And the Mill Levy prior to that point also was set at a rate to support volunteer fire departments. You know, looking back, I think it's twenty twenty. I feel that we, we did make a mistake in transitioning too fast from a paid, you know, from a volunteer to a paid department. I think that we should, should have gone a little slower at that. But part of what fed into that was the grant, you know, and, and Steve was constantly on top of us about, you know, remember this grant only lasts three years. And we're gonna have this drop enough point, well, that's what we hit.
When you add what happened in oh eight, oh nine, you're like everybody else got caught. We're, you know, virtually ninety nine percent funded on property tax. And that was the first thing that bottomed out. I'm not making excuses, I'm just stating the fact. And you can look back and, and oh eight, oh nine, and virtually every special district in the state was practically affected. And it was sort of the perfect storm and all that sort of thing, so we're just, we're just giving it, we're just giving, you know, reasons. I don't give excuses and. You know, everyone has to do what we can for the best possible way. We're open, we're available, and I'll say this too. I, I guess, I don't mean this in a defensive, negative way. I don't know if any president or board member ever had a call from anybody saying, can you answer some questions for me? I would have, I would have sat down and gone through months and months and years and years of books to say, this is how we got here. If somebody would just ask, why don't we ask? I'm not saying that in a, in a way to demean anybody, I'm just saying that we were available and open. And I really can't stress that enough, that there was absolutely nothing to hide, never is, never will be as far as I'm around. And we were very open and accessible, not just at the board meetings. But I'll guarantee if anybody called me up and say, gosh, I've had a question about this, I've been down here working hard to help them out. So. I don't know what else to say, so.
Chief, I'm not, I'm not on the board. Can I address the Hobbs family in a public? The leader of YouTube. Yeah, Chain Elder, C shift engineer. Brandon, Anna, I wish Brandon had been here. Four years ago, I was out on the pad dragging holes by myself because no one wanted to train with me. You showed up as a civilian in city clothes and drug clothes with me for two hours and moved to talk to Chief Green. You might be leaving this fire department physically, but you've made an impression here on C shift and on every one of these guys behind me that is lasting. Anna, thank you so much for giving us your husband for the last two years. I know it hasn't been easy all the time and from Wellington Fire, because I don't think you're gonna hear it, I'm sorry. I'm sorry that this has happened to your family. I'm truly sorry, Brandon, that this has happened to your family. Sucks, because your family is our family. No BS, your family is our family. I'm sorry this has happened.
Thank you, and I'll. I, I appreciate that, that's the session along the way. I know that it's, it's been, it's been, to me, I've shared it with with others and I've tried to share it in public form that, that the part that's hurting me the most is that everything that's affected is affected. True people, the names that you've read. The main authorities that's in the same places that we dealt with. People that have been separated, gone, that came here for a reason to come to this, this agency. We, we separated with people that made a choice to come here from a different, from a different department, different agency, different work background to come here to work to give it time to go on. Under eighty. Not truly understanding what the state of the situation was. But on staff, gave them time, worked hard, despite everything else that's going on. Coming in there and talking about player retention, that's one of the things I'm trying, trying to uncover and unkill the enemy to that piece of it, the understanding of how bad we are, how, how, how deep the hole is. That was important for me to be able to have a reputable third party county firm dig into that part for us and help us really know for the bottom. That, I mean, the bottom is, you can't start filling in the whole. And the bottom, the bottom line is that if we're not doing something drastic about it now, and I recognize we presented some different options if they drag the timeline farther out. But it's in, in professional opinions and in digging into that piece of it. It really is my gut that said if we don't do something drastic about it now, we're having a different conversation six months from now about what those options are. And actually, my, my hopes going forward is that the board packets that we present related to finance are open, that our finance firm is willing to do that and any questions we have and anything that we have to give back. So that's, because as you say, if I lived here, not, not lived here, but live here. Well, on recognition where things were, I didn't go back and walk away. It's gonna be, it, it hasn't been easy and it's not gonna, not gonna be easy. My commitment to the board is to share when I make a decision to stay was that I'm not living where else, it's like I live here. I want to do everything in my power and the power of the board and who else to, to try to do the best we can to provide that level of service that we can build there, recognizing that where we were was artificial, was not real. Wasn't supported, it wasn't sustainable. Unfortunately, that came, came to light in a big way drastically, so. It is actual real people or families that affected. If you're seeing this kind of, same thing. That the feelings are changed with many people, so. Everything that you have done does matter. Because you didn't do all that and keep up with you. Shame you mentioned, you've been part of that and shared that with other folks that have made others better than that, so. Keep doing that. Which was something that was apparent that we'd be able to keep us where we were, but it's, it's on there. Our expectations are not supported and we've been to hit that hard reset so we can build.
I just have one more thing. I do want everybody to understand that the people that have been dismissed from employment here, that has not been swept under the rug or anything, that those investigations are still underway and any wrongdoing that occurred, we will find it. And they will be dealt with as extremely as you can. Go back to the, at the end of the day. The board meetings, if I had any comments on that from May eleventh. No comments on it. Any other motions?
Make a motion, approve consent agenda from.
One second.
I'm just gonna vote with that. Voice vote, voice vote, motion second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Steve?
Yes, just, oh, we could just do, we could just do that.
Yeah.
But yeah.
All in favor?
Aye. Chief's report. As Chief Hobbs talked about, we're still finalizing the, the remaining couple of position moves that we have to do to to get to where we are with the proposed budget as we look at that later, with that proposed budget supporting from there. Additionally, as Chief Hobbs had mentioned as well, we've had, we know that there are some other people that have been testing and, and there's there's a significant amount of hiring that's happening in the region right now for the fall. So within our northern Colorado kind of front range area, well over sixty positions are being filled from other, from other agencies. So there's a significant improvement that's happening in the other agencies out there. And shared with, as, as he talked about in there, that across the livings and everything else that's going on, there's other, other agencies that have been been able to give raises and do other things and so that, that delta between where our salaries are and the, the surrounding agencies is, is continues to grow. So that's a, it's a challenge to face, but it's a, it's a real decision that folks are making relative to their, their families or the families things. So that's, those are, those are ongoing right now. We have two of our personnel that just, just finished one week of the PFA Driver Operator Academy. So, I've got a dumb one in the back over here, which is upstairs and my partner, so they just did a week of driver and company training through the D O Academy. And Lieutenant Dels was also supported, that's we use my heart rates out there, but the rest of those, so they have that private train. We have, we had, that was, it was only one week forty hour training class. To that, we do our, to our folks, so. Bernie and Cody Kelly just finished a three day RC technician class. Host staff PFA, so to be certified RC technicians to see that. So we've been, we've had people that have transitioned out and we have, but folks through the training, so we're down to just two people that were certified. One on, all right, might have, might have three, but we have a spaceship, we should, some folks on that, so. Got a couple of folks on C ship now that finished that, so thanks for going through and giving your guys time and doing that, I appreciate it. Lieutenant Dels is gonna be moving effective the twelfth onto our, to a forty hour schedule, so we're moving over to be an administrative officer for us, so. Have a couple of different areas of responsibilities, primary it'll be overseeing some training, also be fleet and facilities management. And then helping to oversee some of the other programs that we have from there, but be on a, on a forty hour schedule for us to do. With that, that will allow us to continue to work through covering government administrative needs, but also starting to prioritize some of those things that have been deferred maintenance on apparatus, deferred maintenance on equipment. Folks that have been struggling to get into some of the training programs and get some of their certification classes, so that hopefully we can tighten that down. Or get our folks through some of the state car training certification programs that we have to do, so. Forty hour week, we're being discussed. We're in the, we're in the transition phase right now of our, of our pay cycle changes. So we're in, we're in a short, a short pay cycle right now for our admin and for our line that will, all the pay periods will end on the eleventh. And that will be the first time that we'll have a pay period standing together, starting with a new fourteen day pay period on the twelfth. So we'll process payrolls from there. At that point, we'll be going to a fourteen day, fourteen day pay cycle. So we're doing with a pay, pay period ending on a Saturday and then we'll be able to process payroll during the week of the following week. But payday's being on Friday from there, so we're in the finalization of just the last little bit of employee have of changes. With that, we'll be transitioning, right now we do our, for the line folks, we do a payday and a B payday. So we do the, we were doing the thirteen day pay cycle with twenty six day pay periods for the, for the F L S A. We'll, we'll move that just to a standing fourteen days, so each fourteen day cycle will pay the overtime or the F L S A that goes without. So it will be more of a flattened across the way, so that the overtime they work during that period, we'll pay overtime during that period. And anything that goes over that, I will say minimum, we pay during that period as well, rather than, rather than the small day patients that we do right here. And then all of our, all, all of our folks will be on the same pay cycle. Yes. The other thing that we're looking at doing, we're in the process of, of working through, finishing out would be transition from into a, who we're using for payroll right now, it's a Paylosity, it's a, it's the payroll company from there. So Bertha has done that and transitioned that piece and it'll, it allows to, to be at the, at the payroll company that can can process payroll more than just our internal into it with those things for us. Fire, fire payroll is one of the more challenging things with the F L S A cycles and the, the different hours worked and how that transitions salary into hourly and then anything that goes over that. The transitions into overtime pay, so those are the things that we're working with. So we're in the final, final phases of that, it's, there, the goal to that and have that going through there. So I'm looking forward to kind of getting that payables cycle more streamlined, yeah, so. So it's been, been a bit of a lift, so I have to thank the James and folks and Sarah for helping out with that. And Bertha for kind of paving the way and working through all the other stuff, so we're kind of writing down the coattails of all the programs that they've done with Crusants and Paylosity and those, and so that we can have it following through that piece of it, so. That's a, that's all I have for, for the quick one for this one.
I have some questions, Chief. And I apologize.
That's okay.
Very simple questions, but I'm new at this.
Absolutely.
F L A cycle?
F L S A, Fair Labor Standards Act. So, so we pay, we pay our personnel straight time because of the shifts they were also working in a twenty four hour shift or a forty eight hour shift. They pay, they pay at straight time, that the Fair Labor Standard Act says any time worked over a certain amount of time within that, however your pay cycle works, has to be paid at overtime. So say anything over a hundred and twenty four hours, if they work a hundred and forty four hours and twenty of those hours, even though they're just regularly scheduled, they get paid at an overtime rate. And depending how their cycle, sometimes though in their pay cycle, they'll only work ninety six hours, so it won't, it won't trigger that overtime. But we have to track that properly so that we're paying overtime appropriately.
Okay, and then the other thing you said is finalizing position, you're, you're moving positions and you're finalizing that. My question is, are people leaving or are we?
So, so that, so that goes to the, to the point that, that Chief Hobbs was talking about. So what we, where we stand right now, we have eliminated other positions, so we've eliminated a few admin positions, we had a couple administrative B M S officer positions that were on forty hour, those have been eliminated and gone. We're, we're now, we're sitting with right now the, the amount of staff that we actually have. Chief Hobbs and Chief Dory are the exact amount of people that we have for the, for the positions that we have. But we don't have, for instance, specifically, we have fire engineer openings. Where we have all the lieutenants that we need from there, we have fire general openings, but we're eliminating the battalion chief positions. So that's the kind chief position that only opportunity for those, as Chief Hobbs talked about, was, were a vacant position. So our fire engineer positions are the only ranks that we have vacancies in right now.
And we, so we don't need.
We, we're not budget, those aren't in our budget going forward because of where the budget is. So that, the, it's, it's So that, the, it's, it's a balancing of need, want, need and what we can afford. And that's really been the crux of the biggest part of this discussion.
Okay. They're, they're welcome to move to lower position and play your say.
That's all we, that's, yes. And as stated, it's, you know, there's a pay cut that goes associated with that. That's the, that's the biggest hit.
Thank you.
No, that's all I have for that.
Go over the monthly financial report, the balance sheet.
And I guess this way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have the main financial reports in your packet. A couple of things that were points I wanted to point out to you. So revenue for the month of May was four hundred and seventy five thousand, which was actually over what we budgeted or what was in the budget by two hundred and ninety five thousand. That's predominantly down to timing on tax revenue. When you get to the year to date piece, you actually see that we're five hundred and forty six thousand under what we budgeted a year today. And that is also an added time of the tax revenue. So we've done some calculations on the budget. We look at historical collection of tax revenue. So if you decide to move forward with the, the new budget that's been proposed to you, then we will build that new budget into QuickBooks and we'll base the tax revenue percentages off what we've seen historically. So what we still see some variance, but hopefully less. On the expense side of the month of May, we were at two hundred and fifty five thousand in expenses. We were slightly under budget. So we were four thousand five hundred under what we budgeted for the month of May. Most of the savings you will see is based on the discussions that you've been having with the changes to administration. So we saw around thirty thousand in savings compared to budget in that line item. But we did have some capital outlay in the month of May. It was installation of the server. So that was over budget. That is affected in the proposed new budget that we have in perspective. But that's why you see the variance there. Here today, like I said, we're at one billion, one million nine hundred and thirty five thousand on the revenue piece with five hundred and forty six thousand under what we had budgeted. Now again, it's down to a time, you know, the tax revenue. And our expenses were one million three hundred and thirty seven thousand with thirty six thousand. So again, if you decide to move forward, we'll build a new budget into QuickBooks and hopefully we'll see less variances compared to budget without help of the board. See if there's any trends. I'm not particularly concerned about the various received on tax revenue. It is purely down to timing. I'd love to see what we've received the same time last year. We are behind what we received for the same period last year. There's a hundred and forty thousand, not five hundred and forty thousand. So we are slower than we were last year, but quite a lot less slow than we are this year on tax revenue. So again, I'm not hugely concerned about it. But this is how the budget's built. So I point that out to you.
Other question, the installation of the server was over budget. And so you said you put it in the amended budget. Did you take the overage out of something else to balance the budget?
So with the amended budget, you'll see the capital out. It is, we just increased it. And so for your balance.
There wasn't anywhere we would have taken it out of the bank. We're just, we're not going to get back to neutral as quickly as we want.
Spending.
And so that line of credit that you get back on that increased as you saw in this. We'll shuffle. So a lot of money that we have to get back on all the credit will increase to account for installation.
Got it. Thank you.
Server's communications with that were that.
That's where that's at.
Yeah. And I think one of the points was made earlier, I really used to make it as easy as we possibly can for heroes aboard to understand financials. As easy as we can for the project to understand financials. Hopefully we're doing that. As the point was made, people need to have that data. And the data can be out there. Some of the data is confusing. So we really try our best to make this easy to understand as we can. So if there's something you'd like to see, please let me know. I think the, the cover page, I think is a really important page for everybody to read because that really does point everything out. But if there's any questions, we'd like to send you the reports. You know how to get hold of me. I know this, I know this. So I do know that there is a particular board member that might want to see a bit more detail, which is fine. And but we try and, we try and make sure the reports are obviously all the information is in the report. But we try and make this easy to understand.
I'm wishing that that the monthly financial report.
On there.
Aye.
To the issue cash balance.
You got some new question?
Oh, we're just going to prove that reconciliation.
Well, we got, we did it. Cause they're all coming out for a course. Okay.
That's.
That's okay.
For the financial.
And that's just to show you the, the ties to the balance sheet. So that's just to show you what was physically in the bank.
Right. And I think that's how you made your motion, right?
Okay. There is one correction, and I don't know if it makes a difference, but you have the deposit in the, the check on the summary of the reconciliation cash balance.
Yeah.
Which I know it's a deposit, just the wrong line item, but I don't know if it needs to be corrected for our records. I don't know.
Well.
I don't know. Let me know. I understand it's a positive.
I don't need it to be corrected because you're really, it's the, the reconciled amounts all accurate. But yes, thank you for the point.
Can you point out to the boards?
Oh, yes. Sorry. Summary of reconcile, reconcile cash, second column, the four hundred and twenty eight thousand should just be one lined up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Twenty twenty two, desk, oh, one. Concerned, absolutely. Fiscal year twenty twenty two. So do is open the, open the public hearing portion of it. So close the, find a process, this regular portion of it and open the public hearing file.
Do you have any public comment regarding resolution number twenty twenty one on one?
Twenty twenty two.
Two, twenty twenty two on one.
Wait. My name's John Peter, being one thirty two fourth street. I also serve on the Florida Justice for the town of Wellington. I did find your information. One suggestion that I would have, a concern was brought up about availability of financial information. Because I know I'm on a board, I know to go look in the packet, but if I'm the average citizen, I have no idea. I can't go to your website and know this type of finances. You can put something up there. It's a link to you, the finances. That would be very helpful, especially if you're wanting to get input on this. Because if I'm the average citizen, I don't know how to give input to you on this proposed budget amendment. So just an idea on that as a way to help gather that. The question I had on here is you do have the amendments showing an increase in revenue from the oil and gas from zero to four thousand. Is that something new that you're adding in or is that something that's changing for?
A line.
It's, it's gonna, it would actually be the exhibit eight portion.
Today, show. Property tax revenue, oil and gas revenue was approved for zero dollars. Now that number is going up to something. So I don't know.
I think it's just something we hadn't, hadn't recognized and split out before as a.
Correct. Yeah. So those numbers are based on assessed values of.
And so we just, we, we never, so at least I understand, we never recognized it as a separate type of a line item. Or in some other counties, it's a significant, for us, it's pretty insignificant amount and it just.
Okay.
Move the last few reports.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
That will be out in our meeting. Work comment.
Time stamp that.
Yeah.
So.
So yeah, as you have seen before, we have a resolution and just to, to help kind of circle back around on this for the board is that, as you shared in the last, last meeting was that when we became apparent as we were working through the budget development piece in the latter part of twenty twenty two, as it came in here in October, that as we started looking at finances, we recognized that the way that we were developing the budget and some of the things that we're using as revenue pieces to support a balanced budget. Were, were a challenge to be able to, to tie those two together. So we, we recognize that there were some adjustments that we're going to have to make to recognize some of the, the other, our, our other fiscal liabilities that we had to address. So we spent the last few months going through those, working real hard to really try to uncover what, what exactly our true fiscal liabilities are and then amend the budget accordingly to be able to address those over, over a multi-year period on those with prioritizing the things that we needed to address the most. And so this is, this is our attempt to, to do that again, so that we can tie in as we're looking at month to month reporting. We're not reporting off of the twenty twenty two adopted budget that we knew that we have to make changes to, but rolling into this piece of it. The last piece that I'll, that I'll change, that I'll share with you that addressed is that one of the things that we did in the, in this other amended version is that we've looked at wildland, wildland revenue as being a revenue piece, but that's directly tied to an expense. It also goes with that. The hardest thing with wildland is to be predictive of if I get a hundred thousand dollars of revenue, what is going to, what's the expense that's associated with that? And to be as really as conservative as possible, our wildland revenue and our wildland expense should net out to, to nothing. If we make revenue off of that, if we have additional costs that we don't have to spend on that, well, then that's going to be a little bit better. But if we plan for it to save the twenty percent revenue profit off of that and we don't hit that mark, well, then we put ourselves in a deeper hole. So we did add rev, wildland revenue and expense to the exact net out. So one fifty of each. So if we hit any of those, as long as whatever our wildland revenue nets out to our expenses, then we're, we're fine. We won't have to hopefully amend this budget one more time in place. If we have wildland, I mean, that we didn't, we didn't account for, but then we get it, we would have to amend the budget to, to recognize that.
Just so the new board members know, during this section, the disposition of the resolution, this is when the board has opportunity to ask any questions, make any comments or anything prior to it actually going forward.
I, I did want to say that I, I like the new process of going through actual expenses prior to your actual expenses and making the budget is on actual, what we actually use, not on budgeted. So I appreciate that. I did want to mention, I was told that the training and health and safety went down by around eighteen K because of a grant received.
We, and we, we haven't received enough revenue yet. So we're, we're in the process of, yes.
That's why that's less. And now it's. I did have a question about the contingencies. That's volunteer pension contribution. I'm just wondering, is that a set amount? Is that determined? How is that determined? How much we pay?
So.
So. That, they're, they're essentially two different pensions. One pension that the paid people get and it's through F P P, Fire Placement and Association. They administer it all. So that's one that, that we pay and that is.
Comes directly on in our payroll side of that.
All the time.
It's based on how much they make? What is it based on?
It's, it's a percentage. So the employer has a, right now.
It's a, it's a defined benefit. It's not a defined contribution. It's a.
But we, we have a set contribution that we make that is required of us. It's a percentage. I forget right now if it's nine or nine and a half. But it will increase a half percent each year until it gets to twelve, ten, or thirteen. And the employer contribution, the employee is twelve percent.
So the other pension is that of the volunteers. Now, F P P A sets standards. But once a firefighter has put in a minimum of ten years volunteer service and then we change fifty, then they're allowed a pension, which is based on X number of dollars per year of service, which is set by each pension board. So we get a report quarterly from F P K saying how our fund is. And that should sound, and then we as a board decide how much we want to contribute to that fund. We got behind for a long time. Cause there are a lot of volunteers who we, we went for years. We've gone, we've gone through without even doing a regular COLA on a annual basis. And you can't, we could count up saying, guys, here we are again. And here we are again. So the goal of this board is to be very aggressive to make sure that we keep up with at least the, the COLA expense, cost of living and what is the, the government sets. It's not going to be ever as high as, you know, like that. But there are a lot of volunteers who put in a lot of years of service and they have that coming. So it's not a set amount. It's what we can feel, we can budget. You know, it's not set. And the only thing is that the goal is to put in at least ten thousand, five hundred dollars. Because if you put that or more than the state will match that. If you don't put it in, you'll get those.
And the other part is that it's so between the board and the pension board, this is where I decides on that. And then it's based off of actuarials that every, 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 every other year, the F P K, through the F P K to get an actuary report. And that will present the percentage of the, of, of how the, the total pension system is funded. And so the board will use that, the take into all those factors to determine how much needs to get put back in versus the outflow that comes out of that to at least keep it at whatever percentage that it's funded.
So the, the paid staff gets a certain percent of their wages that we pay towards pension. The volunteer, if we didn't pay anything, they wouldn't get anything?
Well, there's, there's about two million dollars net fund, but eventually it'll go away if we could contribute to it. So our goal is to fund it as much as we can possible. We've fallen behind with the volunteers for a number of years. We just seems like, you know, we wait and wait and wait. And sometimes we go five, six years without raising it. And again.
Putting funding, funding.
Putting, putting, well, and, and raising the pension benefit. So it's a, it's a, not a set amount. It's what the board can and should be able to be more aggressive to catch up, to at least fund what the volunteers would be getting in a percent basis compared to what. So.
Yes, thank you. The other thing is the communication equipment that we went over budget for.
Well, it, and let me correct it a little too. Just, so we, we budgeted it in twenty twenty two. But in twenty twenty two, because we, we already knew we have, we were going to have to do that. So we've got price on that figured out. Or is in our total twenty twenty two budget? It's just how we started to carry that in the amendment as we were going forward to that. So we, we initially did the, the first amendment where we pulled that out because we were using historical. So we started to look at a historical piece and said, oh, we haven't spent anything on communication equipment. Let's take that out of the amended budget. Let's take that out of the amended budget, and then we will time out tomorrow. We already know that that's coming because we've been, we've been waiting for six months for the server to actually arrive. So we had to put that back into that piece so that it actually carried in the true one that we were gonna put forward on that. We thought we were gonna be able to cap initially when we looked at historical costs, have a savings in that piece of that. When we realized, no, that's that's still coming.
So the approved budget is twenty seven thousand, the amended budget now thirty one thousand, so that's what we.
That's the actual cost.
Right. So I'm just saying that we went over four thousand on that piece. I was wondering if there's somewhere where we can subtract four thousand so that we don't have to increase our debt. When we go over budget in one area, we need to decrease in another area, so we don't go further in debt.
I mean, that that is potentially, but that's what we look to do was on those type of things was to go on actual costs, right? So we're also looking at trying to make sure that even we start to look at things like fuel and some of those other costs. We we even accrete, increase those more in the amended budget, just to try to account for what what is actual in that. So.
Can we decrease four thousand from the one hundred and three thousand from the pension contribution?
Uh, we that. Yeah, in the pitch war, because we, that was that, that was already voted on and approved and adopted for this year in December, at the December meeting for that contribution for this year.
And the election expenses, we don't have an election, so why is there eighty thousand?
We did have.
And that's all it costs.
Well, no, it's not, we're not done yet, but I mean, we think that's where, so we're we're, we've estimated into that being the total forecast, because there's some that the final. The final piece of the invoice back for that, we have budgeted in significantly higher to start with. But we, in doing some of it, and then being able to do just some of the cost control measures of opting for how we would do that election. Ourself, where it will keep more of the cost down. So I feel like that's waiting on the last little bit of invoice back, what we. And where we where we stand actually, we just paid one last thing, I think the last thing we have is for the final bit of a May bill from the from C R S, which.
And you know, the budget, we're gonna be over and under all through, it's just, that's the way the fire service, we might have an engine blow tonight. And, you know, but it's a.
Just to add to that budget, I think obviously we answered some questions last month. We really tried our our best to appear suitable data, to achieve our operational needs. We're gonna miss the target on some of them to that point, it's going to happen, but we're gonna be very close on most of our items. So to your point on the four thousand. I understand where you're going with that question, because everybody wants out of that budget. The fact the budget is balanced, and we want to pay off as quickly as we can. But it's also our hope that service fees are higher than what we actually budgeted, so we were quite conservative on some of our revenue pieces. So if we see more on that revenue side, we're not, we don't need it anymore, but if we have some of these. Out of the ordinary revenue pieces, it can help us go ahead.
I forgot about that, thank you very much. One last question is. The wages for the staff.
Well, two, two parts, so it's historical up to, I think we were. Through through the end of March.
For for salaries.
Those have to salaries at the end of April, and then projected from that, from April going forward, based off of the 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 position changes.
And when did the board decide which positions that have? If that's supposed to be a board decision, no?
We have input. Yeah, you, we're gonna present a budget, and then you're gonna adopt that budget based off of those items. And then we will, we'll we'll run through those and adhere to those best we can. And if we look like for some reason we're gonna be over on some type of a budget line item, then we need to come to the board and talk about what we're. What changes we're looking to do, or if we're gonna re-budget and make those recommendations of that, I think we're trending to be over in this area. Where are we gonna make the cuts to make sure that as a as an entire budget, we don't end up over budget?
You will comment on the resolution?
So if we adopt this now, then there's no turning back or getting getting rid of those. Because there will be no money for them.
Just like you're amending the budget now. I I, yeah, maybe answer your question, yes, the next piece to that is. We've built the forecast based on operational input and based on how much money we have to spend on expenses.
So, yeah, I think, yeah, so I think the big pieces that are those, right? The debt, the debt pieces on those items, the the prioritizing of which which things we're looking at, right? So line of credit being now first part of the.
So I would like to make a motion to table this so that we can have the discussion about Mr. Hobbs. Comments about the positions and what we want to do with that before we cut that out of the budget. That's my motion. The next.
We aren't against any deadlines at this point, are we?
No, I, well, we just need to amend it to know what we're doing operationally moving forward. And the the. Until we amend the budget, we're gonna continue to report on. Items that are not accurate, that there's the the comparison from budget to actual is not. It's not real, and then the, you know, the the last part of it really is the the part that's the, you know, the hardest to to stomach is that. The longer we move down with positions, the the less we are going to be in a position to pay off our line of credit. And I think we talked about it back then, I think, I think part of it's worth saying just in the meeting is that. The line of credit that we're on right now, we are, we have a portion of that is paying off twenty twenty one's bills that carry forward into that piece of it. So that we've talked about in a work session, we run a risk of with a line of credit, right? We won't, we're gonna be approved for a certain amount, and if that certain amount isn't enough to. To finish our year off. We're we're at a place where we don't. We don't pay salaries and we don't pay bills, so.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, first, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
I I just wanted to say one thing, I I think nothing against Hopper, nobody. They have worked their way of trying to get ahead of this. And if we just keep pushing, and I know it's not a push off thing, if we're gonna just start talking about liquidating, we got trucks out here to liquidate, that's what we're gonna do. And you're gonna have a truck, a truck. And if that's where we're going with it, that might get you out of debt now, but if you do not fix what we're doing, we're gonna keep going down a hole. So unfortunately, it puts me in a really hard position to sit in here. I mean, we can table it now, I don't have a problem with that.
We we press the numbers, I mean, it's unfortunate that we're in this position, I hate to say that, but we have pressed the number, we went through this scenario, this scenario, this scenario. We want to be in debt ten years from now, we didn't want to be in debt ten years from now. That's why we made this decision.
And. Regardless, by the way, we set right now to tie.
Well, I didn't, I missed it, did, is that? Did you say yes or no? Okay, so.
So we have a tie, so it will have to be tabled.
Well, it's, no, no, it fails, a tie, a tie fails, so.
But like they said, moving forward, because we can't amend another thing if something comes up, I'm not, I mean, that's just. It's still open for everything, so.
So you need a new motion.
And a motion to approve it, to approve, it's okay. Better motion to approve, resolution twenty twenty two dash oh. That's right. Motion approved. And I'll say. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, so one, so. Electing the board officers. Not sure how we're gonna do that with Steve gone.
So that at least, and you guys have done, from the, and my research and understanding, it's basically a motion. For an individual to fill a seat, and then the vote for that, and like, like, just like, if it, if it carries, then that. That's that's what I'm gonna, if not, that's what's in there, so.
I I motion that we use the the nomination procedure. Nominate first, all nominations on the floor, and then it goes on the nations, and then we look.
Go to each one at a time, then.
Yeah.
I just want to mention, so we, so probably, so the, for this one, we didn't do roll call vote, but if this, yes, 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 and no, okay.
We've got president, vice president.
Four of us here, so we're all taking up.
Yeah, yeah. Did you want to, you, did you set an order? Do you want to do it, or do you want?
I would not, I was gonna start with the president. I would nominate Ken, President, he's willing to take it. He that had the position before. So maybe do a roll call on that, then, unless there's any other.
Any other nominations? Be selected by affirmation.
I nominate myself for vice president. What do you next? Treasure?
I would like to be the treasurer.
I also nominate Christine for treasure. Steve starting for secretary.
Thank you. Okay. For president, Pearson for vice president, David for treasurer, and Serna for secretary. All right, can you get an update on the status of twenty twenty one financial audit?
Yes, so he he company has been working on our audit, and James Vincent helped him through there. We were, they came here, did their in-office stuff, we're sending the other things we're looking for. Fortunately, the the main auditor that was working on our audit, well, she had worked on it the year before and came back from from attorney leave to start back. When she worked on ours, she has decided to go back and stay home full time. So it kind of put everything in a halt, and again, during audit season, it put them behind the behind the eight ball a little bit. So they are, they're actively working on that to get it done, just with our deadline of the way that that works, that we should have, we should have presented at this meeting, the first draft for the for the board to see. And then if there was any changes that you do, then it would come to the board for July for the adoption, so that it would be filed by the end of July. So what we request and what they asked to request is for the the board to approve the filing of an extension, and that extends it through the end of September. And they they fully anticipate having it done well, well. But we would be able to meet the deadlines the way they are to be able to see that from board without doing some other special process. So that was their, that was their request, so now. The board is in agreement to that, and. Direct us, the staff to file the file the request for extension.
My motion that we approve a request for extension for the twenty twenty one financial audit. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, so the last item we have, and they're really just, and this this actually takes up more scheme now for there. So we'll need to do the board updating signatures on the bank accounts that we have. The board, the the five board members are the only signature authorities that we have there on that. So we're through, we'll do there, we'll connect with. Both of the the two, the two newest board members to go through there, and then we'll work through whatever we need to do to have other names taken off it. That that piece of it, so, so that's item number one. And item number two, the especially for the board members here, for the new board members. One of the things that we had done in mid to late twenty twenty one was where where the the impact fee counts. So we have impact fee, we have operating fee, we have our tax account, are all held with Points West. And what was happening was there was, there were transfers in and out of the impact fee account operations that that the board wasn't made aware of, wasn't shared with the board. So the 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 stopgap measure with that was to to stop the on the ability to do online transfers. Within that, it created a little bit of an issue for us on two two platforms. One of them is we receive our money on a on a monthly basis, direct deposit from the county into the county, the county account. That includes our taxes, our specific ownership taxes, and our line item for our county impact fees. So for us to get our county impact fees out of the tax account into it. We are, we're writing, writing a check from ourself, or some to ourself, and deposit that to the bank. So we, well, the other piece that we need to do, as we've been auditing through the the impact fees, the use of impact fees. We have support to approve us to put money back into that account, and then to finish the auditing process from there. So what, the discussion with James Vincent, bringing on another, another third party, having a treasurer in place, what the what staffer would would ask for approval to do would be to. To line out a process to allow us to, again, start doing the transfers within the bank. But looking at a process where the only time we really need to do move any money is once a month, moving the money from the county tax receivables account. That the items that specifically looked at the impact fees, transferring that into the impact fee account. And then the only other time we would do that is when we take board action to approve the use of impact fees. So this typical thing that we're doing is really once a year, we're asking the board to make an appropriation out of out of impact fees to account for the two lease purchase payments that we have. But for the next three years, we have one additional. But for the next three years, we have one additional payment that we're making, which is that, the, the remainder of the impact fee account. Money that's going to go to Sage, but we would really do that in a check process to do that part of it, as that comes out of the town impact fee account. So, the town, we receive our impact fees via check, so there's no, there's no need to do any transfers from within that. And, and talking with James Vincent, what, what we would look at doing would be to, there's no education of treasure, that we're gonna make this account transfer. When we do those, we'll do that, with that, within the board packet for the, for that, for signature, that this, that this shows and those tie outs to the account balances going forward. It would stop us from having, kind of use the check process of writing a check to ourself from our Points West account, and then depositing it back into our.
So say again, why you stopped the online transfers to begin with?
So there was, the, the previous administration was transferring money from the. Impact fee accounts into operating, and then paying, paying bills and doing things, and then transferring money back when money came in, and so. Basically, the, the impact fees are very restricted on what we can use those for, and so. Basically, it was. The opportunity to utilize it as a other bank account, which it should be used that way.
And this'll, this'll help improve the board's ability to have more oversight. Resolving the situation that was brought up earlier for last year.
And to the chief's point, obviously, the board would have documentation that reconciles, so this is how much was in the impact fees, you clearly see it, the length of the transfer. And with that, the board's initial, see what was transferred and why it was transferred.
So I have a question, one of my clients, when I transfer money, pay bills, it sends a text message code. To that client, and they have to send it to me for like approval, can we do that? For transfers?
I would, I would, we could, I'm sure we can investigate the, I, I don't know, I don't know the system on there, how that works, but I'm sure there's.
Just so it's not done without letting us know.
Or we could send an email, I mean, my original goal was to send an email to somebody on the board. That says, this is why, this is what we want to transfer, this is how much we want to transfer, this is why we want to do it, and get an email back saying, yes, good to, to transfer. And then bring that email with the documentation, but it's not something that needs to be transferred right then.
No, and we're, and we're actually a couple of months behind, because we've been, we're doing head checks, or are we gonna catch this up, it's sitting in the tax account to do that part of it, so.
It's just creating that paper trail, is what I would like to do, and my concern with what you're saying, it's, it's not your full-time government, a board member. So I think the email, you can get to it when you get to it a day or two later, and then we can transfer it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and what we, we wanted to be able to do it so that that, the monthly statement we get from the county, county treasurer. Ties directly out to the deposit that we make, at some point in that month, that says that eighteen hundred and eighty dollars is now transferred to us over here, I think. Those, those trans, two transactions tie out exactly.
Well, you can totally see, see all of us, correct, and everybody that, oh yeah, we know about it, cause it came through.
Something a good thing, thank you.
So if we could get, I, I'd ask for the board to make a motion to approve that, just because we did take the board action previously to lock that down, to stop that, so. And then we could, the, the motion could be something effective, the, the staff to work with the, the treasurer, as we set up the bank accounts to implement. This, for the, for the, the online transfers to take place, and that would establish the, the written procedure then. Sure.
Who's doing the transfers?
So, so right now, right now, it's me, yes, I'm, I'm the one that have the online access, I have online access, transfer stuff for Points West Bank. And I don't have any access for any check signatures, or any access to the, to the FNB accounts online.
Okay, I make a motion to allow Chief Patterson to make transfers. After getting email approval from a member of the board.
We have a say.
Have a second, on a favor?
Aye, aye. I'm gonna have one last one, maybe we approve it, your board report, we give you the disposal report, choose your transfers. And maybe it's someday, you might have to clean that up a little bit.
And again, I think it's, well, we, it's just the way, is, any, as you see that come through the board reports, if you want to see it another way or something.
I guess the only evidence that I would have is to recommend for the two of you, that there is a. Kind of a Reader's Digest condensed version of the state statutes or requirements. That is put out by the special district associations here, and I think the chief can hook you both up in the way.
Yeah.
It, it's real, it's a lot lighter reading than the triggering binders that are this, that, you know, go through, and see exactly. It'll make you understand a little bit more of the guide. Lines that we have to follow. Yes, I think there's a misconception that. We're an independent board, we can kind of do whatever we want, but it's, it's not even close to that. We're very restricted and guided by the state. That's how we can handle this, so, that'll give you some, some good insights.
Can I ask, have you guys been given access to the SDA website through our membership in the past?
I, I think I have.
So I'll, I'll, I'll investigate that to, to set up.
If they have a lot of really good webinars, they send out emails.
Yeah.
Yes, they're a great organization, and you get a lot of education through them.
So I'll, I'll look on that for, you know, if there's something we need to do to come our side, as the. Well, in the membership piece, do we have to do some type of invitation or something, where you can get access to, to set up?
And the certification that I need to get?
Oh.
Yeah, I need it.
The other, other. All right. Just real quick on the calendar, just calendar items really fast, fourth of July, I was, that's coming up, so independence will be a big, big day. As usual around here, so we have a couple of extra, well, two extra people on staff that day, then, just to deal with the other activities that. So, for that, I've been working. Right now, I'm putting together an IEP for the day, an incident action plan, which I propose all the stuff, what's happening, where it is, and there's some formal things that go along with that. To build on that, year over year, on those items that should be incorporated there for the points content, and that, I think, so, and I'll be working with. Sergeant Cherry to kind of fill in the law branch side of that as we go forward, so. Cover that, cover all of this, that, so we look for that. And our next board meeting will be July thirteenth here.
We're not doing anything as a board on the July fourteenth.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, on July fourth, they, they stay correct, yeah, yeah.
And David, if I could request that you add to your motion to adjourn, then we'll take a ten minute recess between now and the election board meeting that will start. All right, is that a motion?
Yeah, I could, I could do it.
All right.
All right, I'll favor.
Aye.
We're here, let's start the pension board ten minutes.
Thank you everyone for attending. Hold this, uh, meeting of the pension board to order at five fifty-three on June eighth, twenty twenty-two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, let's see, Brian, here, David, here, Christine. And Jason. Uh, Steve is. Can I make a motion of acceptance, excuse absence? All those in favor?
Aye.
Suppose. And welcome to. Two new members, and. Any additions, additions to the agenda?
Staff.
The conflict flits of interest, favor this conflict of interest, pretending to get a justice that may occur in time. To see it. I do not. Treasurers' report. Which, uh, lucky for seeing a, your treasurer now, just time for you to do your first.
You can see that the, the, the four typical reports that we get to pull from FPA are included in there, I didn't include a secondary copy of. The, so page two of your report will see what we contributed during twenty twenty-one, and page three is twenty twenty-two, so haven't been any contributions yet at this point, so. Historically, it looks like we've kind of done them after the tax, the tax pieces from there, and then. I, I believe what we're looking at is the, in the year before, the first one was done late, so, uh, January twenty, twenty twenty-one was really the twenty twenty, ten thousand. Five hundred and forty-one match, and so the eleven twenty-three was one for twenty twenty-one, and just for the new board members, we. In the, around in the October time period is when we make that application to the state for that, so we will have. Made some, have to make one of our, one of our contributions first, so that we can actually match that, so that, and then that should reflect at the latter part of the. Reports that come, so they're on a quarterly basis that they update. Does the FPA take care of the match?
You don't have to do anything there.
No, we have, we have to do an application, we have to fill out paperwork to the state for that, and then it gets paid directly to FPA, so we don't have to proceed.
Be able to take care of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we're, we're a few months off from there, but I have, I have copies of the last couple of years of those, so we'll, we'll make sure that we'll pay that. Copy it, submit it. And James Vincent has helped the other practices that are working, I'll just make sure that, that yes. It's pretty, looks like it's relatively straightforward.
Please employer contributions fifty-five thousand, three thousand, is that a mixed, anything being volunteered?
No, this is all volunteer, so this whole system is volunteer, so these are the, this was last year's approved amount that the board approved the previous year. And then we just basically split the contributions up, typically when we've got receivables that will allow for making that contribution to match what the board has directed and what was budgeted for that year. So this year, that, so our one thirteen, or whatever that number was, we had proven in the other part of it, will be. The ten thousand five forty-one is assumed that we'll be receiving that again, and then we'll make our contribution based off of that amount, so. We're, we're right in the time window of, we get, get some more tax money, uh, day after tomorrow, and so, from time to make our first contribution of that amount, so.
So, Jim, I thought that the state only matched that once a year, designed.
Correct, correct, so what happened was, I think, I think what we did was. We, I don't know for, for certain, but I believe what happened was, we filed the paperwork probably, it's supposed to be done in October-ish, and maybe we did it at the very end of October, and by the time it got done. Received, approved, and then processed by the state, it didn't drop into the account until January of twenty-one.
Where the, so this is actually from twenty twenty.
Correct.
October twenty twenty.
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
These, these three would have been the, the two matching for twenty, or the two, uh, our contributions for twenty twenty-one plus the state match piece.
And then here's the state match for these, for points.
Correct. Okay. And just, just for the, again, for new board members, we've talked about this before in the past, just kind of shared a little bit, that there's, there's, there's three different funding mechanisms for how the state determines what they're gonna match. And, and one of them, which is gonna be our kind of overriding one that goes forward, it, it looks back at a historical contributions that were made. And any stop, any, any times that we stop making contributions during that period, and then this, this is then set as the max cap for that. So that, that is the max contribution that we can get, as long as we keep continuing to contribute to match that, so. If we stop again and take a, you know, a holiday, if you will, and don't make contributions, then that's, that's at risk of being contributed as well.
So we have those.
Correct, yes, yeah, yeah, and well, I would say we do need to do it prior to the filing of the request for that, is what, is what I believe is how that works, so.
So to date, nothing, this year to date, so far has contributed.
Correct, that's correct.
And what's the plan for the contribution for?
So we have.
This year, is it just enough to match for the state?
No, no, we have budgeted, the, the board, uh, and the pension board took action last year to approve, I like to put that number if it was like one. So yeah, so it's one of, one of three would be our contribution plus the ten five forty-one, it's just about one thirteen, so.
It's in our regular board.
Okay, so, yeah, sorry, so that's. So, uh, we did.
I'm just writing down, just as what's.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm just gonna, it's something amended.
Yeah. Oh, it shows right there, yeah. Yeah. That's right, that's. Yeah, one oh three.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'd be a one, one oh three.
Perfect.
And then with that, ten five forty-one, it puts it at that, one, one thirteen, which matched what the, there was, there was some recommendations on the. Actuarial for, yeah, contributions of, so they should go a little under, like it said, that use this contribution to match to get, to continue to get you towards sixty percent, I think is what it was, or fifty-eight percent.
Oh, so they give us another one oh three?
So yeah, so, uh, one, no, one thirteen and some other change, so we, the one oh, the one oh three.
It's what's the ten.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna assume that we're gonna get the ten, ten five forty-one match from the state to make that total of one thirteen, so we're, we're gonna contribute. Ten thousand five hundred and forty-one less, because we're gonna get a match.
That makes sense.
And so we contribute one hundred and thirteen thousand less?
We could still ask for the ten thousand five hundred match, and so then our total amount would be one twenty-six, one twenty-seven, it's a change. If we contribute to one thirteen, we'll still get that state match.
Oh, right, but, uh, no, why did we come up with a hundred and three?
Because we took, we, so that the number recommended in the actuarial was one hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars.
Correctment to what?
To, to, to make your actuary like that, to make it, yeah.
Maybe not make it?
Well, to keep us from going backwards.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And, and. My recommendation would be Christine is to get with Steve, um, he's, he knows.
The treasurer.
Yeah, we've been treasured a long time, he knows this inside out, and he would also be able to compute that, the latest actuary.
Yeah, we, we have got one, yeah, and we have, we get that.
Yeah.
Charges.
Guarantee. Yeah. And all it pretty much tells us is, is how sound, it's actually sound that, that can is, it forecasts out, you know, who possibly is going to be retiring in the next. In your future, or our future.
This year, after a safer. Our years, odd years, we do the actuary, right, yeah, do they do the actuary?
You can, you can never do it anytime, but.
Yeah.
Pretty numbers, people, it makes a lot more sense than it does. Any more questions on treasurer's report?
You did a great job.
Okay, pension board business election or appointment of the vacant seat term ending in twenty twenty four.
So with. Board member Myers elect election to the board, he was filling the seat that would go through till twenty twenty four. And that creates so they can see in pension board. That's the start to buy the board. And the last meeting, I reached out to Craig Stone, Craig Snowden, who was the only other candidate that ran that was unsuccessful at the time. He had indicated that he's out of the country traveling that if there if there wasn't anybody else, he'd be, he'd be willing to do it. But he's not available. To be here.
Do we have anybody else that has shown him?
I do have an individual.
In the room, yeah. Has a lot of knowledge to to read as an indicator.
Sue, Sue speak to that rather than.
So. I I would be interested in filling the vacancy if the board chooses to appoint me.
I will nominate.
All those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Move forward to. That'll be a ten dollar member fee. Okay, pension board meeting minutes from March twenty twenty two. Eighteen P. Yeah.
For me, it took me a lot longer to try.
All second. All those in favor?
I.
Everybody's got a copy.
Yeah, any of those on the where I put discussion on that and that was purposeful. So I'll I'll take the the hit on the front end of it as we looked into. So I I was going back through as we meet on the quarterly and I was looking back through the back through the notes and looking back through just documentation that we had related to. The previous minute meetings, comments and trying to find the document where we made the edits and did that part of it. I can't find a soft copy where we did that. And in looking for that, I actually found that the copy that I had that we were making the notes on was the twenty fifteen revision. But looking online, I found the twenty seventeen document. And I I spent some time looking over it over last week as I was trying to get to meeting to see how much it if. If or what had changed relative to that. Because before I just wanted started to do edits, I wanted to make sure it wasn't editing an an older version that hadn't already been copied. So before you, you have a copy of the twenty seventeen version. Yeah, there there is. Yep, sure. And so what I'll do is you'll give me a couple of minutes. So I'll run down a few of the so you seen in the minutes, the notes that were brought up before. But I'll run through because we have the I have the the notes that I that I took on there relative to that. And then kind of kind of show some show some areas on the on the the version that we're looking at. So. On starting on the the first page under article one. There was a note, a note made to look at. Comment where it says retired fire department members kind of about mid midway down on the right. And there was a request to say retired volunteer firefighters, not just fire department members. Because it could be construed to potentially to the members that we have now, which are a separate, a separate pension system. And then. There was another comment related to the very sort of the very bottom of it. The president secretary, trustees shall elect a president secretary from its members after each board election and said regular board of directors for an election. So. Now, that's something that incorporate into the. From there. So so I'll do that, yeah, staff do that, that we said, and then we present to the board for for. We have. Previously made change the bylaws to allow for a single reading on these as well, I believe. The other, the other main amendments related to the the back. Back attachment, so attachment one and attachment two. Attachment one. Is lays out the the actual current. Contract, the current disbursements now. So with the adjustment to last year in that the even so the twenty fifteen, that's one of the things that changed from twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen. And then from twenty seventeen to the new version, we'll have to change that too. So that'll that'll all be updated. So all of all of needs to be updated to go to the most appropriate piece of that. So that will need to happen. And then for attachment two, I didn't have any other notes on that. That kind of drops down the the normal regular year of that part. And I didn't see. There's any other.
So the pension board calendar says August, but in our agenda, it says our next meeting is September. So the.
No, 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 so this is kind of a this is a timeframe of when things have to happen. So so in August of the odd years, we we would receive or request and get that actuarial study from there. So that we can determine if there's going to be a change. February. So request, so we're. We next year in February, we would make that request for an actuarial study. And then they would go through the process of doing that. Do that at some point in summer, we would receive that actuarial study back and start the review process of that to prepare for the the later meeting to make determinations of there's going to be changes to. How much we need to contribute, any changes to benefits being paid out.
Did we miss the step of the election? The new president and secretary? Or is that? Just we got made.
Oh, you did, we have.
I guess we did election and appointment, we just did the appointment and then we.
Well, do we?
So I don't know if we need to.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking about it.
Historically, the board officers have served as the officers for this board as well. Otherwise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the reason it's in June this year is because of the election.
Yeah, and I think that's where that so I guess that so that well, that so what we did was we said. We didn't put, and that's something in here, I guess it would be changing it to be following the. Board of election. So may. Is it fifty May or June, I guess it depends. Do we always meet, there's a pension board always meet in June? Is that how we do those quarterly or has it?
Those are same month.
Third, sixth, ninth, and twelfth.
So, okay. So we could just change that to June because it would basically never be in May. The election would take place in May for the actual board member for that to turn over, but we wouldn't need it May as a pension board, right? So so we could make that be June.
If I'm not mistaken, that whole transfer that the president carries over and that is by state statute. Can check on that.
I I know that the treasurer of the board has to be the treasurer of the pension board. That that's. I'm not, I'm not positive on.
Maybe we just. I know there's something there about it.
Yeah, definitely the treasurer.
Job. I can. Because I that that brings then. So it 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 states that as it as we read down article one, the treasurer of the board of directors of the district shall be the treasurer of the pension fund. March five bond. Trustee shall elect a president and secretary. So. This would be the time, I guess, to decide, and we don't have to say right now, I want to do that. But if it if we wanted to say we shall, and then we do the process of just saying. We'll do the election right now and that's how it is, or do we want to say that? That. That this would be the place because we're adjusting and we're saying that we shall elect a president and secretary. So that we we shall make that do that process in this process.
But it doesn't mean it's.
We could.
Everybody is in position is.
It could, yeah, it could take thirty, it could take thirty seconds and we could record it on the minutes that we did it.
Yeah, and that's why I think it would be that nice because if there is somebody that really wants to be like, let's say, first.
Yeah.
But if somebody is not on the board and they really wanted to push, they wanted to do something key, gives them option.
Yeah.
So we we don't have it on the agenda to do that.
It's with the appointment, election.
But I mean, our on our actual agenda tonight, do we have that? So we could call that. Collection appointment, we we could consider that part of that.
Oh, I see.
In the sense of like, we we didn't, we did, yeah, we could take action based off that if the board. If the board's good with that.
We haven't been, we're like, what do you want to do?
Oh, yeah.
So I I guess that this part of it then would be, I will work on making making amendments to the twenty seventeen version with some some track changes. So you can see where that's at. If there's anything else you see in that in that twenty seventeen version.
I have a question.
Yes.
What does it mean when it says, I'm sorry, article one in the middle, the president and directors of the district for their term of office? And two firefighter representatives are alternating to your terms. Does that mean that firefighters on the board? And then who's the other one?
Yeah. So they're retired. And so that might have also been where so we did some some. So then, like. Let me see if that was.
Long enough to your skin, why it sells.
So, yeah, so I think I think that you did.
It's a little outdated because I'm sure we're first back when we still have all again.
All of us, right? So they're starting to that.
So instead, it would just be. We still have some volunteers, right? But they. But they've not any convention because they.
Right.
Yeah, so they either get a pension, like we didn't have a choice back in the day. Or you're going to stay, right? And I think those are. They're still all right. He's on pension.
Right.
But I meant, I mean. We've closed the volunteer.
No more, no more new entries. Okay.
Yeah, so we they no longer did that option here just.
So we, I mean, I could say to. Current or previous volunteer firefighters.
They have to be retired.
No.
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 We should be on the board now.
Yeah. Yeah.
It. You can be a current volunteer or you can be a retired volunteer. Yeah.
You need to clarify if there's a.
Well, no, a stipend's not a volunteer, they're considered reserves. They have a different classifications.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I know they're they're under our classification as a as a reserve firefighter.
So if we just say two volunteer firefighter representatives, that has. Okay, so. We look up above that F. About halfway down, it says all current members of the fire department. That should be.
Yes.
All current volunteer members.
And she'll vote in the election for these two guys. Okay.
And all retired, should we obviously did all say an all retired volunteer part. So right now. Yeah.
Like zero two years.
That goes out to all the volunteers to vote.
Yeah. And then being nominated.
And that's where that time that timeline kind of that timeline kind of addresses to that a bit.
And then which which fund is it the the board's general operating fund that leads to that election, the pension board? It's.
It's well, it's envelopes and postage.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's it's basically we did, we put it all together, staff puts it together, sends out a.
If you want to be honest.
I will send this, send this back.
Most year we don't have any election because we don't, you know, we haven't had anybody that ran it, but last year we did, but.
Yeah, last year was the first year I ever done sending the mail to send back. Yeah, and that was the first year I'd ever seen the mail that I had to send in. So so actually, I didn't send it.
Oh, yeah.
Still.
Yeah.
Well, so much of this became new after we no longer had any volunteer. You know, yeah, so before that, we just sort of the membership meeting say, okay, who wants to be? Who wants to do these two positions and. They rotate to. One's up.
Yeah, absolutely. Someone's live up next year.
Yeah, so I guess the the last piece then be if there's any other, if there's any other potential amendments or corrections you want to do. Some of those my way and I will include those and. Find a find a word version of this or get my. And they'll be fired up in turn and do a word document and start start editing it from there. But I I just couldn't find any comments where it had been started in or in some of us. And just, you know, potentially just related to the change of staff. Sincerely. Some admin.
Just put it on the agenda for approval.
Yeah, that would be that.
I knew the article five says that's kind of the end, like five thirty first of each year that for the. That's coming up.
Oh, wow.
To apply for the state and the contribution. July thirty first, yeah. July 31st and.
So I think how it's typically, that it looks like is we fill out a paper work and then you get your own sign.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we submitted, the, get all done, it's like we submitted electronically into the.
So where there are numbers after the subtitles, those are actually CRS. So, you know, we can, we can check that and make sure that that's still a current requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Colorado.
Yeah, you too.
It's now it's, now what is it?
Revised.
Could not come up with that.
Yeah.
Yes, wait.
Yeah.
I, I couldn't find a, I couldn't find a word version copy of this 2015 that someone was starting to do the edits to.
Okay.
But I found that, I found the, I found both PDF copies in our files. But I did notice that the 2017 was newer than the 2015. And so I was like, it's not the older one. I started to go through them, but I just, I just didn't spend time to go through it, find my line to make sure that we weren't editing something that had a slight edit to it done.
Well, I, I do have a word copy of the 2015, which might save you some time.
Yeah, okay.
Cause a lot of it is the same.
We can go through this and get back to you.
Yep.
Do you have a date that you'd like us to?
Well, I think our next meeting will be September. If we can do it, you know, by early, early July, later, that'll allow me to draft it, get it done. And then I can just get it out to you guys as a deadline version to look at, you know, well, well, I'm advanced about.
Talk about the September 14th meeting, or should we wait to get there? It's after the adjournment, so I don't know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think.
Because that, I have it on my calendar as the SCA conference is that week. So.
Is the con, the conference isn't the end of the?
September 13th through the 15th is what I have, I could be wrong.
Okay.
In that case, do we just do it the week before, the week after, when we get some new messages?
Well, I, I don't totally follow that.
I, we are, we're in a number of conflict. First time for.
But we should probably put that on the agenda. Still, if we had, you know. Having, you know, that day was, people were dead center.
At the conference.
Yeah.
Not that we have public, but then public wouldn't be able to come.
I think it did have once because somebody was driving back. Because last year probably all zoomed, so.
Yeah, last two years.
Sure, yeah, I think we're right on the edge of starting to get out of.
Yeah, exactly.
That they were just going in person back, that they just brought it back. Do we need to, do you want to do on that item one, do you need to make a, something formal for the appointment of the secretary and the president and secretary? So make a nomination and.
I nominate the ones that are in position.
Motion to just, period, period, the president and secretary. So it's just, yeah, just president, this treasure goes down to which they do treasure a president and secretary.
Okay, I'm sorry. All those in favor, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Discussion will be tabled till the next meeting and actually be as a.
Yeah.
Okay, other, anybody have any other pertaining to the pension board? And as far as the calendar will, will.
Question mark. Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll, I'll just send it out to the board, just the notification that if there is something that there's a desire to change, then we just go direct to post that.
And on that same note, anybody that's interested, like, probably needs to.
Yeah.
Let the chief know as soon as possible, so that we can book rooms. They're only really booked the cheaper they are and they get expensive up there. There you go. Anyway, okay, I motion we adjourn the pension board meeting for June 8th, 2022. All those in favor, aye? Oppose? Motion carries at 6:33. Okay, it looks like David and I have checks designed. So, yeah. As far as getting your signature, stuff done, it's safe. And then picking the cheap ones.